Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to tonight's candidate forum for the Palo Alto Unified School District. My name is Adam Dawes and I am the publisher for the Peninsula Publications, including the Palo Alto Weekly and the CEO of the Embarcadero Media Foundation. First off, tonight, I wanted to thank all of the candidates for coming and participating in this event. School Board is one of the most important jobs in our community, and I want to salute everybody for standing up and being willing to serve. It can be a bruising position at times, but it is one of the most important, so thank you all for your participation and willingness. The Palo Alto Weekly has served Palo Alto for the last 45 years, working to provide high-quality journalism, fact-based journalism, that serves the community, promotes discussion, and helps move the public agenda forward. This work does not happen on its own, and I can tell you that our staff here has been working extremely hard for the last, you know, month-plus, trying to collate and obtain all the information that helps all of you as voters make an informed decision about who best represents your views and the direction you'd like to take the school district forward. So with that, I wanted to introduce you to our moderators tonight. So we have Sarah Wright, who is the editor for the Palo Alto Weekly, and Lisa Moreno, one of our staff reporters. And we're also very lucky to have two reporters from the high schools. So we have Alma Benavide, who is with Verde at Palo Alto High School, and Vani Saxena from the Oracle at Gun. So thank you very much for coming. Sarah?
Thank you all for being here. We appreciate your time. We also appreciate the time of the candidates. Tonight, we're going to go ahead and get started with opening statements, and then I'll go into a little bit of the ground rules of the debate, and after that, we'll launch right into questions and end with some closing statements. Today, we have five candidates joining us for the Board of Education race, and we offered them this question in advance so that they could prepare their answers ahead of time. And tonight, we're going to give them each 90 seconds to introduce themselves and to launch into their response to this question that we provided in advance. The question is, "Name a specific board decision from over the last two years that you disagree with, and explain how and why you, if elected to the board, would have voted differently." You each have 90 seconds. We're going to start out in alphabetical order, so we'll start with candidate Chu. Please. Yes, my apologies. You'll all have 90 seconds. When you have 30 seconds remaining, you'll see a yellow card, and when your time is up, you'll see a red card.
Good evening. My name is Rowena Chu. I'm running for Palo Alto School Board. I'm the parent of four children in this district in first, fourth, seventh, and tenth. I run on a platform of every child must grow. In terms of the board decision that I would have made differently, I will say that I got involved in local politics when I was PTA president at Aloney, where I've been for the last two years. I advocated for an issue around the closure of the Mod Severe Learning Center at Aloney last February. The ways in which I would have made this decision differently is, I would have chosen to preserve Aloney as a special education for a vulnerable and protected community of neurodiverse kids. I also would have approached the situation differently in terms of a platform that I now run on, transparency. The parents at Aloney that I was advocating on behalf of felt that the district was not transparent in the way that the decision is made, and then they stood by the decision whilst they wished to, they felt that they brought reasonable criteria with which to challenge that decision and with which to have a mutually agreeable discussion about it. For reference, that decision did end up at the Office of Civil Rights, where we're still pending a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Chu Wong.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the Weekly and all the staff for all the effort they put in here tonight, as well as everyone that's here watching and everyone that's watching on Zoom. My name is Nicole Chu Wong. I'm running for Palo Alto School Board. I am a parent of a preschool student in the district at Greendale through Preschool Family, which is run through the adult school, which I am also a student learning childhood development. I also have a first grader in Mandarin Immersion at Aloney, and I'm the executive director of an educational equity nonprofit serving almost 200 socio-economically disadvantaged middle schoolers at all three middle schools in PAUSD, as well as providing sustained service learning opportunities for more than 200 PAUSD high school students. As to what decision I would have done differently, ad hoc committees are relatively new in our district, and we have seen examples where they can be a great way to collaborate. We bring in diverse and varied stakeholders from our school community that can be teachers, staff, parents, students, to come together to make a recommendation for an issue for a way forward and present it to the board. When the ELA Adoption Committee in 2022 was looking at the English Language Arts curriculum, it became clear that the committee did not have consensus, and the board voted based on the recommendation that was reached without consensus. One of my priorities is to ensure that we're earning trust personally and as a board and ensuring collaboration. So when we have a process that's designed for collaboration, we need to make sure that we find consensus.
Thank you. Next is candidate Colahan.
Excellent. First off, I just want to say thank you so much for having us at this forum, and thank you all for attending this forum. This is fantastic. My name is Chris Colahan, and I'm running for school board. And eight years ago, I left a successful career as an engineering manager at Google to become a stay-at-home dad for our kids. And when I did that, I dove into our schools to see how I could help in every single possible way. I joined the PTA. I've been on the PTA board for seven years as a treasurer and also as a president. I would get dressed up as Doofy the Dragon and dance around for our kids at Duvernec because, you know, it entertains them. I fundraised for Pi, and also, for the past couple of years, I've been a substitute teacher. I may even taught some of your kids. I've taught every grade from K through 12. I've taught in all 17 of Palo Alto schools. And so this experience as a manager, as a substitute teacher, as a parent of two kids in the district, we're both fourth-generation Palo Altons, and also as a PTA leader, makes me think I'd be a great board member. As to what I would do differently on the board, what I would do is I'd focus on having more and better data to support our decisions. All too often, the presentations that the board gets has a cursory overview of data or has data which you look at and you're like, eh, I can sort of see how that supports a decision. And I really want to dive into the data and make sure that we have more data, higher-quality data, that we have better explanations of what that data means, both to the board and also to the public at large, to help with decision-making, so that when we arrive at decisions, people really understand them.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Kamai.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. My name is Allison Kamai. Very excited to be here tonight. Thanks for coming. I am an immigrants' rights policy attorney by day, and through that work, have learned that all change is local, and that's why I am running for the Palo Alto School Board. But I'm here first and foremost as an engaged parent. I have a daughter at Green Middle School, so I've been in the district for many years, and also a son in kindergarten, so looking at 13 more years. So a decision that I would have done differently comes from my role as a volunteer and engaged parent, which is that two years ago, the district announced that they would be closing fourth and fifth grade aftercare at our sites at all of our elementary schools, so Kids Club, Kids Choice programs. As an impacted parent, I started going to board meetings, and I applied and was one of only a couple parents on the ad hoc school board committee on childcare to look into this. So the first thing I would have done differently was to be very transparent about why that decision was made. As I learned, it was made in order to comply with the state's ELOP program to provide expanded aftercare options for low-income and English-as-a-second-language students. On that committee, we actually expanded the Pi. So not only did we not close the fourth and fifth grade programs, we made the Pi bigger. We're able to keep those sites at all of our sites, so keep Kids Club, Kids Choice right at school at all of our sites, and expand aftercare options for English as a second language, special needs, foster care, and unhoused youth. It is that type of creative thinking, good governance, transparency, and communication that I hope to bring to the board.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Salzman.
Thank you so much. I'm Josh Salzman, and I'm running to be a trustee of the Palo Alto School District. And I think that word, trustee, is so important because it speaks to how the school board is entrusted by the community to represent its values and priorities. So when you vote for me, you're placing your trust in me to guide the future of our schools, and that is something I take very seriously. It's why I think it's so important for us to build and maintain trust through open and honest conversations with students, teachers, and parents, and it's why trust and transparency are among my top priorities. It's also why I'm dismayed at the number of missed opportunities to build trust in our district. How many times in the last two years did our district leaders seek out meaningful community input? The answer, from the hundreds of neighbors I've met, is not enough. How many times, like on November 14th of last year, have district leaders considered forming a committee or study session or focus groups only to abandon the idea? In my career as a product designer and entrepreneur, I sometimes avoided getting feedback. I was worried. We might have to take a step back, do more work. There were times I thought I knew what people would say, so I didn't ask. I simply went ahead with my plans, and I learned an important and sometimes painful lesson. This is not a reliable strategy for consistent success. We have to listen to feedback. We have to embrace data. As a longtime parent, volunteer, and PTA board member, I hope to win your trust and your vote, and I hope to work with you to build a bright future for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your intro statements. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the rest of the conversation tonight. We are going to start once again in alphabetical order and begin asking questions of each of the candidates. For each subsequent question after the first, we'll alter the order of who responds by one to allow each of the candidates a chance to start first and end last. Other than that, we're also allowing each of our candidates one challenge. So you may use this challenge once tonight. Go ahead and just raise your hand anytime you want to add on to the end of the question, get our attention. We'll let everybody finish their responses for this one question and come back to you at the end. So feel free to use that anytime you'd like to just add something on and respond to anything that anyone said. And with that, I will pass it off to Lisa for our first question tonight.
Hello. My name is Lisa Moreno, and I'm a staff writer with Palo Alto Weekly. For our first question, there has been significant debate over how Palo Alto schools handle math placement and advancement. Do you support the current middle school math placement program, which gears all students to take Algebra I in eighth grade, and the laned high school math program? Why or why not? If not, how would you change it, and what would your focus be on? You have 90 seconds to answer.
We'll start with candidate Chu Wong, please.
I've spent a lot of time speaking with parents and students, and particularly our teachers, about math. And in fact, I was just talking with one of our math instructional leads at the middle school level on Monday about what to do with the future of reimagining math in middle school. And what I came away understanding from all these conversations is that we've had a lot of change. I do not believe that laning was right. I'm glad that we stopped doing it, and the two things that I think are our primary concerns now are, one, ensuring access to math, which we are now doing, and ensuring that access to be able to reach the level at which we want them to potentially reach in high school. And we're doing that now, which we weren't before with laning, so I'm happy about that. The other thing we want to ensure is the quality of education and instruction, and that's something that I think that all of our teachers can agree we want to work on. This is still a relatively new curriculum that we've adopted and programmed, and so from talking to the teachers, they have asked, I think reasonably, for time to be able to figure out how to ensure that we're diversifying our instruction and differentiating to meet students' needs and to be able to see through this process and iterate as we go along. So I want to make sure we're supporting our teachers and particularly our instructional leads and thinking holistically about the math journey that student takes. So not just thinking about it at the middle school level or at the high school level, but engaging with fourth and fifth grade teachers in elementary school and thinking about the transitions between grade levels, as well as where they go in high school and what they're expected to know from middle school, to make sure that they are prepared.
Next up is candidate Colahan.
So this is a really complicated question to address in 90 seconds, especially since I suspect not all of you understand exactly what's going on in our schools with math. So let me take a stab at it. First off, at the middle school level, four years ago, we transitioned from a laned program where there was an advanced and a regular stream of math to one where we have a single stream of students going through the math in our middle school, sixth through eighth grade, finishing with algebra, which is a ninth-grade course, which they complete by the end of eighth grade. This transition actually has had some amazing benefits in terms of getting more students. Actually, 19% more students are getting to the end of algebra and successfully completing it by the end of eighth grade. It's also had some challenges for another group of students. 11% of our students are getting to the end of eighth grade, completing algebra, and not successfully completing the course, so they have to repeat it in ninth grade. And there also are challenges for some other students. Another thing that's happened as a part of this transition is we've gone from 8% of our students in middle school skipping a grade and getting to geometry by the end of eighth grade to 15% of our students are now skipping a grade and getting to geometry by the end of eighth grade. And so all this means that there's been a lot of changes, there's a lot of complexity. I too was talking to an instructional lead earlier this week, believe it or not, and they've got some great ideas on how we can improve the current system without destroying some of the nice properties that the delaning has had. And I also want to clarify, this was also asked about high school. We currently have a lane system in high school, and I do not support changing that to be a delane system in high school because I think the current system in high school does an amazing job of supporting the wide variety of desires and abilities of our students.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Kamai.
So this question goes to two of my campaign priorities. One is academic opportunities for all. So by this, I mean making sure that we are supporting our struggling students and also making sure that we are challenging our advanced kids. The reimagining middle school math program was intended to help struggling students and to help advance our historically underrepresented kids. I'm excited to see that we do see a higher enrollment. However, it remains to be seen how kids are performing and how they will continue to perform as they move through high school on this program. In terms of the placement, I think it's really important to make sure that we are very transparent about our placement options and that we are flexible. That goes to another one of my campaign priorities, which is about communication, trust, and transparency. By transparent, I mean folks know what the expectations are for moving forward, for having advanced pathways, and by flexible, I mean that we are willing to take feedback from the teachers, from parents, from students who are moving through these pathways to adjust as necessary to make sure that our kids are placed as accurately as possible. Finally, I want to say that I think there are many more options than either going back to where we were or staying exactly where we are now. I come from a family of educators, and I would approach this question with both humility, curiosity, and talking to experts about the best way that we can provide support for our struggling students, as well as challenge our advanced students, and I think that we have some work to do on both of those fronts.
Thank you. Next is candidate Salzman.
So I want to start by saying that I think the goal of delaning math at the middle school level is a valid goal, and the goal, as stated, was to make sure that we're providing access to students who might not otherwise get access to higher-level math once they get to high school. So this is to make sure, basically, that students aren't getting stuck in a lane that is below what their actual abilities are, and I think that that is a great thing for us to shoot for. But I do have concerns about the way that we're implementing the program currently. And so I'll just tell you a little quick story that I heard from one of the instructional leads at one of our middle schools. And what I was told was really dumbfounding, and basically, what we're currently doing is, for students who are in eighth grade, they're taking algebra. Let's say in the first semester, they're clearly not succeeding in the class. The class is not the right fit for them, but they've been sort of forcibly accelerated into it. So they are struggling, and it's clear that they're not going to pass this course. We are currently requiring them to take the second semester of Algebra I, rather than giving them an opportunity to take a class that could provide them with a solid foundation that would allow them to then move into a ninth-grade Algebra I course and actually get all the benefits out of that course that they might have access to. And so I just mentioned this because it's an example of a certain rigidity that I think we have in our district that we need to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
My campaign motto is "Every child must grow," and I interpret that to mean appropriate academic placement for every child, whether in maths or in other academic subjects. I know that a lot of the debate around our current middle school and high school programs has centered around what we previously had, which other candidates have described as laning, and then when we move to this process of delaning. In talking to innumerable community members, it is patently obvious that there are issues with both for various different reasons. I think it is true, as some of the other candidates have said, that the odd system under laning created a fixed mindset around maths. It may have placed a child in a lane that was not as high-performing as other lanes and made them think they're not good at maths, and therefore they cannot move forward with maths. But delaning has also had problems. The issue of putting a number of children, a large number of children, in a classroom with differing math abilities makes it harder both for the children within that classroom to learn and also for the teachers that teach them. I think it is very clear that success in maths is at least partly psychological. Whether students feel that they can succeed in maths is a big factor in that eventual path to success. Therefore, in this solution that we hope to find, which is not laning and which is not delaning, but my fellow candidates said, we must approach with humility, I hope that we will find a way to foster a flexible mindset rather than a fixed mindset about growth in mathematics.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next question is around the Ethnic Studies course. As you all know, there has been deep controversy around the adoption of the new Ethnic Studies course, and that, to some, has exemplified parents' desire for greater input and transparency regarding curricula adoption and more insight into the district's workflow when they are implementing a new course. How would each of you have handled the creation of this new and historic course in the district, and do you support it continuing as planned? We'll start, you will have 90 seconds once again, and we'll start with candidate Colahan.
So I first wanted to start off by explaining where we're at with the Ethnic Studies adoption. We've had plenty of community input sessions this spring, and that input has been received by our teachers and curriculum committees and have been built into a demo version of the course, which they're running right as we speak. All the feedback I've heard from this course is that it's been wildly successful and not controversial, and so the expectation is that as of December, they're going to declare success, that they've got a new course, and then this is going to be brought along with all of the other new courses that our teachers have proposed for our students to curriculum adoption and presented to the board in January. The board then has a choice. They either approve or disapprove of this slate of courses. And so what's been proposed in many interviews and in the media is a pause on the courses. And pause is not really a defined concept. It's either yes or no. And so what would have to happen at this meeting is you'd have to vote no. And a no vote is effectively saying, we don't trust the teachers, we don't trust the Curriculum Adoption Committee, and so it's a vote of non-confidence in our teachers to coming up with a course that lines this narrow path that gets us what we need, which is a successful Ethnic Studies course. Not only that, but our teachers really care about being the ones in control of this decision-making process, so much so that they've negotiated, as part of the teacher's contract, they have a whole section on academic freedom. And so I really don't want to open a can of worms of not supporting our teachers and picking a fight with the teachers' union.
Thank you. Next is candidate Kamai.
I think Ethnic Studies is incredibly important. I also think it is incredibly important to do it right. I work at a racial justice immigrants' rights policy nonprofit. I know how important it is for folks to see their heritage represented and to feel recognized and safe and like they belong, both in the eyes of the law and in the school. However, I also think that community input is incredibly important, and we need to make sure, I talked about academic opportunities for all, and I talked about transparency. I'm going to talk about my third priority, which is safety. We need to make sure that our kids feel safe in the classroom, like they belong. If they do not feel like they can belong, they cannot learn and they cannot thrive. So I think it's really important to make sure that we are getting feedback as this pilot process continues, so that we know how to move forward. It is incredibly important to me that Ethnic Studies is a substantive class that is effective, and it has the potential to be transformative for our students. However, if we are not getting input, then it also has the opportunity to either be a nothing class. It really doesn't do anything that we want it to do. It was a requirement in order to celebrate the diversity that we have in our community, in our state, in our country, and in our world, but it also has the opportunity to create more division, which is the tragedy to me, that a class that was designed and required in order to bring us together would, in fact, do the opposite. So I think it is important to do, and I think it is important to get feedback to make sure that we are doing it in a substantive and effective way.
Thank you. Candidate Salzman.
So I agree completely with what Ms. Kamai said, that the adoption of an Ethnic Studies curriculum in our district is a very, very important step for us to take. I definitely agree that this is a course that can provide great benefits. I think it's important for students to feel heard, to feel included, to feel valued, and I think that an Ethnic Studies course has the potential to do that. At the same time, I have heard from many parents who are concerned about, not necessarily the development of this particular Ethnic Studies course, but simply because there have been Ethnic Studies courses adopted by other communities, other school districts in our state, in our country, that have caused tremendous division in the communities where those courses have been adopted. And so I don't think it's unreasonable for those individuals to have concerns. I think that the school board could have avoided some of the current issue that we're experiencing if they had established clear standards for this course from the very beginning that laid out exactly what was going to be taught, what was not going to be taught, what type of examples were to be provided and not provided. I don't think that would have necessarily gone contrary to the importance of giving our teachers flexibility. I think it's also something that we can work with our teachers to help them understand why this is perhaps a special case. I hope that we don't have to pause the adoption, but I think we do need to make sure that people feel safe and heard.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
Like my fellow candidates, I also believe that, of course, Ethnic Studies is deeply important, both for the content that it has in helping students understand better about the history of our nation and also the content that it has helping students understand the wider world that we live in and the geopolitical situation we find ourselves in. It is, of course, as important as this course is, it is, of course, deeply important to get it right. And it is clear that with such division within the community in which we live and such contention around this course, that we haven't got to a place where we're getting it right. At its best, Ethnic Studies will enable students to see more deeply and understand more deeply the ideology that drives our complex and diverse world. At its worst, it will cause greater division in our community and, of course, put the safety of certain groups of students at risk. We cannot have that. I believe that if I had been on the board at the time, that I would have emphasized the importance of getting community input. I think that an issue as contentious and as difficult as this one, as hard as that is, requires input from administrators, teachers, students, and parents, and arriving at a consensus will not be easy, but I believe it's deeply important to have each and every voice heard over this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, candidate Chu Wong.
I want to be clear about what's happening and what's not happening in our district. We are not adopting liberated or inclusive Ethnic Studies, which has led to controversy elsewhere in our state. We are rolling out a curriculum in Ethnic Studies that we have done for over a decade, of which we have capable, skilled teachers that we should trust, that have rolled this out in a pilot with no issues to date, and have been teaching it for over a decade with no issues. And they are confident in moving forward, and I've heard wonderful feedback about this course. And in fact, we have a pilot going on that was oversubscribed, and we turned students away. And the plan is to move forward with rolling it out as a full course that all of our students that want to take it will be able to take as a requirement for graduation next fall. I am fully in support of that, and I trust our teachers to be able to do this. Not only do I think that this is required by the state and something we should do, but... but I am the only candidate here that actually has expertise in Ethnic Studies. I have a degree in Asian American Studies, which is a form of Ethnic Studies, and a degree in Women's Studies. And I've seen the studies that show that middle school students who are historically underrepresented and marginalized when they take Ethnic Studies, all of their academic scores across the board increase. And not only academically, but their sense of self and understanding of who they are and their place in the world and the things they face and experience in their lives increases and increases their empowerment and sense of self. I experienced this myself and that's why I became an Ethnic Studies major when I was in college. It is not just vital, and I understand if you're represented in our current history books, you might not understand the urgency, but it is urgent we give this to our students.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vonnie Saxena. I'm a student journalist at Gunn High School's newspaper, The Oracle. The differences between student experiences and class offerings at Gunn and Pali are quite significant. For example, the speech and debate team at Gunn has a lot less resources. Pali does not have a social-emotional learning class and also a required language placement test at Pali. Do you support greater aligning these two schools and how?
We'll start this question with candidate Kamhi.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think every school to some degree has its own culture. And I think that we do want to be respectful of each school having an identity in and of itself. However, when there are disparities, such as what you mentioned, and I know many others that we've been hearing from as well, I do think we want to look into to make sure that as clearly as possible we can provide all of our students with similar opportunities. And I see this in three different ways. I think we need to be making sure that we are supporting students as evenly and consistently as possible academically, so making sure that we've got offerings for similar classes. Also in terms of extracurriculars, that folks have access to the same similar types of opportunities at Gunn and Pali. And I also see this in the socio-emotional context, so making sure that we're offering similar services. So how would we do this? I mean, I think that's what we as a district can do is to really look holistically at the different options and see what we can do to, we wouldn't want to cut something from another one, but what we could do to be additive, to make sure that we are either offering something similar at the other school or making sure that we can combine or allow folks to access the resources at the other high school. I also want to make sure that we are talking about our third high school as well, Middle College High School, and to figure out how we can align our district more so that the experience is similar, although of course not identical throughout for all of our high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Saltzman.
So I think that the answer to this question depends on a number of different factors. One is the degree to which students have choice and families have choice. I think one of the things that's great about our school district is our choice programs, which we do have at the elementary and middle school. Those provide students and parents with an opportunity to find a program that's the best fit for that student. And so one of the things that I am curious about is whether or not students could potentially have the opportunity to choose, you know, as it currently stands, students can opt into Middle College. Whether they can choose between Gunn and Pali is a separate issue. And I also wonder about the possibility of students being able to take courses if they're not offered at their home school, whether they can actually go to the other high school and take that course, which I think is something that could help us solve this problem. I think another issue we have to look at is funding and whether, you know, we do have the budget that would be required to provide parity between the two schools. So I think that's important as well. And this really goes to one of my priorities, which is making sure that all of our students feel supported and included. You know, I think it's important for us as a school district to make sure that we're providing opportunities that align with what our students are looking for so that they feel that they're being set off on a path for success in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
My family's choices for my four children and their education in this district have very much focused on choice programs. In fact, we've been part of preschool family, Lonnie Elementary School, JLS Connections, the Pali Team Program, and now my oldest daughter is in Middle College, the new third high school for Palo Alto. So I think that my answer will stem from my experience as a parent in all of these choice programs. I'm very much a defender of programs that are in their own way have this personality, that are driven by creativity, that are driven by passion, that are driven by difference. However, I would say also that in terms of Gunn and Pali as the two much larger and visible high schools, I think I have sensed a tension among high school students in terms of that offering being quite different at both schools and some tension because it is indeed very difficult to move between Gunn and Pali depending on where your home is. So therefore, I would say my answer would be, I think there are basic building blocks that must be consistent between the two high schools in order for there to be fairness or equity. And I would say that one of those basic building blocks would be a social-emotional program because I consider that to be incredibly important. But in terms of extracurricular activities, I think that these may be considered as more optional. And I would like to see each school retain its unique identity and its unique passion around the special things that it offers. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu Wong.
I know from running a program at three different middle schools that it's easy to say they should all be the same or they're all in Palo Alto. What I've learned is that each of our middle schools and each of our high schools has its own unique character and culture and it's important to foster that. And it's also important to have alignment in certain things. And I certainly think that in social-emotional learning curriculum in particular, having that shared language is really important as well as thinking also, how do we make sure that that shared language starts in elementary and continues with a common thread through middle and through high school? We should be, in regards to social-emotional learning, also creating opportunities to have it reach students more effectively. So it's, we do things like at Green, we had Challenge Day and I got to be an adult volunteer at Challenge Day, which is built around connection and students sharing and being vulnerable and learning to empathize and understanding each other's lived experiences. We did something like that, similar to that at the high school level at Pali and we should make sure we're also doing it at Gunn. So I certainly think there's things that we want to do uniformly while still maintaining character for each program. And when we can, having flexibility to ensure that students are able to take the classes that they want, even if it happens to be at another one of our high schools or having the option in certain circumstances to be able to switch high schools. I hope we have that flexibility as a large school district and I understand that we have for many students.
Thank you. Candidate Colahan.
In answering this, I fall back on my experience. My experience as a manager tells me that there are advantages to centralized decision-making, to standardization across your organization. And there are benefits to scale, which, you know, in some cases, for example, in providing support services for our kids, it makes a lot of sense to standardize. There are other places where it makes a lot of sense to have distributed decision-making. Let these schools, let the teachers show their passions. Let them cater to what the needs are of the community. I've taught in both Pali and in Green, sorry, in Pali and in Gunn as a substitute teacher. And there are dramatically different demographics in those schools. There are dramatically different cultures in those schools. And I think it makes sense to allow our teachers and our staff to cater what's offered at those schools to the needs of the student population that's there. And I'm sure that's also true of Middle College, where unfortunately I've not gotten a chance to substitute teach yet. And also, there's never going to be complete parity on physical facilities. They are different buildings. They were built at different times. For example, Pali has a glass blowing studio and I don't believe Gunn has a glass blowing studio. Does that mean we should be busing kids from Gunn to Pali so that they can do glass blowing? I don't think that's a reasonable ask. But Gunn has other facilities which Pali is lacking. And so we get to have each school have its own unique characteristics, its own unique flavor. And as long as they're getting similar amounts of resources and have similar high-quality programs, I think that works well.
Thank you.
In our candidate survey, all of you indicated that you favor AI use in learning. How would you go about implementing it? Do you favor imposing any limitations on that use? What would those limitations be? You have 90 seconds. Candidate Saltzman.
Yeah, to be clear, my support for AI and learning is not to be used for completing assignments necessarily. I think that there are some appropriate uses for AI in terms of how students can use it as a way of sparking creativity, for example. I think it is possible for instructors, teachers, to use AI to help individualize the materials that they're creating for different students. I myself have used AI to create stories, social stories, to help my nine-year-old understand what the expectations are on the playground for when he's interacting with his friends. And so I was able to use his interests and plug those into an AI model so that I could create a custom story that he would be able to understand. So I think that there are some opportunities to use AI judiciously. I think what's really important is that we take, follow the lead of our teachers and make sure that they're comfortable with any of the ideas that we might be considering. I don't think this is a decision for the board necessarily to just mandate from above. I think this is something where we should make sure we're listening to our teachers and do something that makes sense in the classroom, make sure that we're avoiding the temptation to use AI for cheating. That's definitely something we don't want in our schools. But I think there are potentially some good uses for it. Thank you.
Candidate Chu.
Thank you. I've seen some examples of how AI is being used for education in East Africa, where I work professionally. And I've actually seen it be very transformative in the classroom. In places where AI can be used to provide the actual, what would have been the actual instruction from the front of the classroom, which means that teachers, instead of teaching in the sense of lecturing, can then move to a facilitator situation, which is very beneficial in cases where we have classrooms where children are at a range of different learning abilities and they need either smaller group and one-on-one support. So the AI replaces the actual teaching and learning and again, where teachers can be facilitators. And I can see that being transformative in our classroom usage here. I agree with my fellow candidate that in terms of the actual implication, implementation, we should refer to teachers in the classroom as they move up through the learning curve of integrating AI into their classroom activities, that we should look first to their expertise and experience in terms of adding that in. I would caution however, that in this use of AI, I consider this to be additive or an enhancement to the classroom experience rather than a replacement of actual learning on behalf of the student. So similar to my fellow candidate here, I am not referring to using AI as a substitute for doing your homework or not learning yourself as a student how to be creative or to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu Wong.
I think there's a lot of common sense guidelines around the way we would use AI in a classroom, where we want to teach students how to use it appropriately but not to not do their work because of it. And so what I'd like to spend my time speaking about is the way our teachers use it, because I'm really excited for it to hopefully become a way in which our teachers' lives get easier and they get the support that they need through being able to do some of the things that would take them time more faster and more efficiently through the use of AI. I'm encouraged that our district actually stood up an AI leadership group where we have invited two teachers from every elementary school, three teachers from every middle school and five teachers from every high school to come and participate in this group of teachers that is trying to learn best practices and how we can use AI to improve the lives of teachers and make teachers' lives easier and more efficient and more effective in terms of serving the wider range of students and being able to deliver their courses more effectively. So I'm excited for the use of AI and particularly for what it will do for teachers. I'm excited for this leadership we have on it in our district. And I think we let teachers lead the way and set their own guidelines for how their students should use AI in the classroom. And I trust our teachers to do the right thing.
Thank you. Candidate Colahan.
So like the other candidates, I think this is a rapidly evolving field. We don't actually know how AI is going to be used in the classroom tomorrow, but we know how it's being used a little bit today. And so we need to trust our teachers to lead the way. We need to make sure that they have access to AI tools so that they can do cool new things with our students. We need to make sure that there are some guardrails about things like making sure that whatever tools we implement in the classroom, they aren't collecting student data in ways which is not appropriate. We need to make sure that our schools don't get hit by ginormous licensing fees for some of our AI tools. So we need to make sure that we are financially responsible with the use of these systems. But most of all, we need to make sure that our teachers, as they learn new ways of using this to improve the educational experience of our students, that they have opportunities to show the other teachers and share with the other teachers and make sure that we advance as quickly as the technology is advancing so that all of our students get the full benefit of these new systems. And if issues arrive, such as arise, such as cheating, which has been brought up already, which come to the point where we need to not just have the teachers say, "No, don't do that," but we actually need board policies to guide how we do things, well, we'll address it as those things come along.
Thank you. Finally, candidate Kamhi.
So here, it is exciting to think about what might happen over the next four years in this field. And so I approach this with a curiosity and again, a humility and a flexibility. So I want to make sure that we are listening to the experts in our surrounding area. We're very lucky to be here in Silicon Valley. That we are listening to our teachers, that we are listening to our staff, that we are listening to our students. I expect that we will not have a one consistent policy on this, but we will be tweaking it as we go. And so here, I come back also to input, that as we're listening for folks, that we are taking that consideration and that as we're making decisions, we're very clear how those decisions affect folks. We want to encourage exploration, but also we want to make sure that we are making, we're not doing anything that would supplant the teaching as is, that we are not going against what teachers or staff might want and that we are not endangering any data. So how would we do this? I think we would just want to be very clear about decision-making. Who's making the decisions? Is it the teachers and in what way? Is it about homework? Is it about classroom assignments? Is it about stuff outside the class? Is it about projects? For classified staff, how are we using this in the classroom? For aides and other ways? How are we using this as a district? What about district staff? So I think we want to be as comprehensive as we can be about all of the different ways that we are seeing AI use and also systematic about how we're receiving that input and how we're course correcting. As somebody that does policy, I know that making a policy is important, but just as importantly is that implementation and feedback.
Thank you. Alma, let's have you ask the next question.
Thank you. District-wide, there's no shortage of funding or resources for student mental health. However, students often believe that taking time out of class will put them further behind or believe that the resources are simply like not useful for them. What kind of mental health resources would you prioritize and how would you make them more appealing and engaging to students?
Thank you. We'll start with candidate Chu.
Thank you. Mental health is one of my campaign priorities. And also, I draw from a deep well of lived experience as someone who is a sexual assault survivor and a suicide survivor with a very public story about depression and mental health struggles. As somebody who has advocated around youth mental health initiatives globally, I have spent quite a bit of time talking to both middle school and high school students about the mental health resources that they currently have available. And I do echo the question stem in the sense that lots of students have said to me that they feel what they currently have in their schools is either inadequate or there's too much stigma attached to using those resources. So first, I would say that I think that access to what we currently have, which are increased access to therapists and wellness centers, to avoid the stigma of doing this during the school day, I believe that the district could invest in resources that students can access outside of the school day. But I think more importantly than that is to really address the root causes of stigma around using mental health resources. Normalizing the conversation about depression, mental health, suicide ideation is deeply important. Normalizing the conversation certainly among peers, but also in terms of directly training teachers to look for signs of depression and mental health and anxiety, which may or may not present- may not present in the way that society would often have it do.
Thank you. Candidate Chu Wang.
Well, I'm grateful for all the infrastructure that our school district has built for mental health and wellness, such as the wellness centers and bringing mental health associates in-house as staff to ensure that they have the time that our students need. I don't believe it's been as effective or utilized as we would like, and so mental health issues continue to be a major source of concern. And in fact, mental health and wellness is a priority of all the candidates that are here tonight. And I think that we need to lean into encouraging our students to lead the way and supporting them in the efforts that they make to have these conversations and to make it so that these services are things that they feel are not stigmatized and that can be utilized as well as diving into other resources in our community like ALCOV. Some recent student initiatives that have been really amazing were the one put on by Pali ASB in partnership with the Asian American Foundation where they were opening up intergenerational conversations with real transparency and vulnerability. We also had a student group through YCS led at Mitchell Park a few weekends ago, Beyond the Books, where they offered different wellness conversations and workshops and had other community organizations that are resources provide information for students there. So we need to continue to do that and hope that that changes the usage of the wellness centers and infrastructure that we've built. We also need to, as adults, think about the way that we're acting in our district and the actions that we take, every action we take as a board and as adults in our community. We need to think what will be the mental health impact.
Thank you. Candidate Kohlerhan.
So I spent eight and a half years in grad school getting my PhD. When I did that, I talked to a lot of grad students, and I don't know if you were never in grad school, you probably don't know, grad students have a lot of struggles with mental health, including myself. And that's not something we talk about as much as we should, and it's not something which everyone talks about as much as, as much as they should. And so I really support these student-led initiatives to de-stigmatize mental health. And I, like Nicole, I thought that, that effort, those initiatives that have occurred in the past few weeks were actually quite inspiring. And so I have my own experience, but I'm not an expert in this area. And so what I would do is I would lean into what is it that our students think would be most effective for them? And also what do the professionals who we've hired in our district to work on this think would be the most effective changes that we could make? And I just want to listen, I want to listen to them and follow their lead. I know, for example, we already have efforts to make our wellness centers more engaging. For example, they've got free snacks, which I now know means that students just go in there and get free snacks all the time, which is maybe helps a little bit, but maybe doesn't achieve the desired goal. I don't know. So I, I plan on listening and learning as fast as I can.
Thank you. Candidate Kamai.
So I'm going to make a couple of points here. First, the current board and the previous boards have done a really great job of making mental health recognized. Once you name it, then you can address it. So let's go to the second part about how to better address it. I think that we both want to make the services attractive, but we also want to think about those root causes. And I think we want to think about early on, we're very lucky to be in a unified school district, we've got K through 12 and beyond, and we can really have cohesive approaches to mental health issues that our students face. We have issues to address folks in crisis, but how do we prevent them from getting to crisis in the first place? How are we addressing students early on who we can identify that may have needs later? And how would I do this? I think a couple of things. One, we would be asking for input from students. So my understanding is there's a survey that goes out, about 50% of high schoolers answer it, many people say they lie. So we would be trying to figure out how can we get meaningful input from students about what more they might need and what more services could be accessible for folks. The second thing I would talk about is that this is not just a school problem, this is a community problem. So how can we be better addressing this with our community partners, with city council, with the services that we have here, with other elected officials, and with the entirety of the school district and the community?
Thank you. Candidate Salzman.
This is such an important question, so I'm glad we have an opportunity to talk about it with everybody who's here today. I think that there are a couple of different issues that I want to cover. One is there is a distinction, I think, between medical mental health issues, and that's something where I think we need to make sure that we're helping students identify when that is an issue that they're facing, help parents understand what the possible warning signs might be, help peers understand, you know, what to look for in terms of their friends so that they can help point students to medical attention, because that I don't think is something that we're really in a position to, to address as a school system. And then the other side of this has to do, I think, with stress and anxiety, partly due to a sort of toxic culture that I've heard about, and I'm sure I'm not alone in having heard about this, especially at the high school level. And so the question is, is how do we make progress in terms of that toxicity? And I think there are a couple of different things that we can do that could be helpful. One is I do want to refer to what some of the other candidates have mentioned, which was this amazing event that occurred at Pali with the Asian Student Association. And they had this incredible video where Jeremy Lin, professional basketball player and Pali alum, shared his experience of seeking mental, seeking therapy to help him perform better on the basketball court and deal with his anxiety. And it really made me think that we could be telling a lot more stories like that and also making sure that students understand there are many pathways that they can take through life.
Thank you.
I'm not using a challenge, but rather speaking up for all candidates because we're freezing up here.
Oh, my apologies.
And the air is just blowing directly out, it's very cold. If we could perhaps change that.
Yeah, we can close the doors. I don't believe we have control over the air, unfortunately.
Anyone has a blanket.
Yeah. I will say we'd love to keep the doors open if we could, just for ventilation purposes, but I don't believe we have control over the air. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In our survey, in interviews with candidates, every candidate expressed interest in spending down district reserves, especially through one-off purchases in an effort to maintain fiscal health. What specific district purchase or investment would you prioritize and why? You have each 90 seconds. Candidate Chu Wang.
This is like that question where if you won the lottery, because our reserves are so high. So I don't know what my one thing would be, but rather I know the process I would go through. I would be reaching out to staff and our sites and going through what nonprofits do when they want funding, which is a request for proposal. I think we could figure out where the greatest need is. I don't think it would be appropriate for a board member to say that this is absolutely the thing that we must do. I think we would want to hear from all of our sites and use that money wisely to spend it down because we do have a large reserve right now, and we don't want money just sitting in the bank if we have places where we need to use those funds. So I would go through a process where I would engage with our different sites, all the levels of education and different stakeholders. This could be one of those great examples of having an ad hoc committee and giving them a clear charge to go out into their communities, into their schools, and talk to teachers and students and staff and see where the greatest need is. And I have a feeling it wouldn't be one large purchase, but it would be the different ways that we could impact all of our schools. And it makes me think of the comic for equity, which is the students all on different sized boxes trying to see over the fence, because it would look different at each school site. I think if you were talking to Warner Bionas, from talking to a lot of families there, they would probably be asking for us to hurry up the air conditioning. So, which is ironic because tonight we're very, very cold, so they could come over here, come join us. A kid. But really, there are a lot of needs and we need to talk to the community and the stakeholders and the students and the staff and the teachers.
Thank you. Candidate Kohlerhan.
So like Nicole, I think it's actually important to try and distribute this decision, get information from all of the stakeholders on the various sites to try and find out where the greatest needs exist. If I was to come up with my own personal shopping list, I'd actually listen to some of the students who've already come and talked to me as a candidate and asked me for specific spending, which is they want us to spend on anything that can help improve the environmental friendliness of our school district. They would love it if we got more solar panels, if we electrified the fleet of school buses, if that's practical. I've actually talked to the superintendent about this, and he says that at the moment, electrification of school buses isn't actually practical due to some, some constraints on charging and things like that. But a place where it actually is practical is we have what's called the white fleet, all of the vans and trucks which do all the maintenance on our campuses and stuff. We could look into buying electric vehicles for that fleet, and it would actually fit the mission profile rather well. So yeah, as, as Nicole said, I, we would listen, we would listen to the needs that are out there and we would prioritize appropriately, but most importantly, prioritize for the future of our kids.
Thank you. Candidate Kamai.
Similarly, I think this is a lot about process and transparency, making sure that we're getting input from folks. And I answered that question in that I don't think that we need to be building up our reserve. I think we need to be thinking of that money when we get needs from our students, from our community members, from our teachers and from our staff. So I too would be looking for input in this. I think it could address a lot of what we've already talked about today. I think it could address mental health services. I think it could address bringing community together, so finding more space for schools and school families to participate and have activities. I think we could also think about expanding school in, in both directions. So thinking about expanding our TK program, thinking about our preschool families, thinking about other things that are offered through the district. Also, growth opportunities for our staff. I'm honored to be endorsed by both the Classified Staff Union and the Teachers Union. And so thinking about are we providing enough professional growth for our teachers and for our staff? So here, I think we're fortunate to be in a well-resourced district, and we could think creatively about how to use that as needs arise.
Thank you. Candidate Salzman.
I think step one here is to understand the constraints. You know, there's a fair amount of complexity in terms of how we can actually use the budget reserves. So we need to make sure before we head down the path of thinking about all of the great things that we could potentially spend the money on is first make sure we understand the constraints and also make sure that our community understands the constraints. One of the things that I noticed this past spring was a fair amount of confusion over exactly how these reserves are structured and what they can and cannot be used for. And so I would really like to avoid this becoming a flashpoint in our community. I think it's absolutely critical that we use this as an example from a process point of view to make sure that we're being clear and transparent with the community about what the, what the opportunities are. And then I do agree that crowdsourcing ideas in terms of, you know, once we understand the constraints, how we develop our priorities is something we should definitely do, not just as a board, not just as senior leadership of the district, but make sure we're including teachers, staff, parents, and students. I think this is a great opportunity potentially to invest in sustainability. I also want to make sure that this process is inclusive because this is a large sum of money that could potentially be used to help in areas that affect equity, and yet those, the parents that, and families that might be helped by some of those initiatives may not be the ones who are going to show up in this process if we don't proactively engage with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
I would agree with my fellow candidates. I think the significant reserve that the district has, has attracted quite a lot of attention and also generated a number of ideas about how it might be spent. In terms of the budget discussions I've had with people who have an opinion on this, you know, several people have pointed out to me that the reason for the jump, which happened two or three years ago in reserves, was a one-off reason, and therefore it makes logical sense that the funding should be applied to one-off investments. And they might be indeed investments to various, the various properties that the school district owns. It might be an investment in future sustainability, in sort of equity initiatives. But as somebody who's also been endorsed by PAEA, I think that the reserves are substantial enough so that we can get a balance between those one-off investments, which is certainly fiscally prudent to ensure our future health as a district, but also in terms of, there's been a lot of attention about whether or not the reserves could be used to improve teacher pay. And although a lot, there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that it can't possibly be used for this cause because the formula that is used for teacher pay would then be a long-term investment in increased costs for the district. I do believe that we can come to some middle ground between investing in our teachers, who are of course the jewel of our district, as well as, which is an ongoing commitment, and in terms of a one-off commitment to property and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be from the student journalists.
How would you guys as board members use your role to engage students and get student feedback on board decision-making and campus life? We'll start with Kohlerhan.
Sorry, my microphone was going crazy for a second there, I wasn't sure why. So honestly, this is hard because as a board member, you're somewhat intimidating to students. Students feel like, oh, I shouldn't have approached a board member and talked to them. But quite frankly, as board members, as a candidate, we've been desperate to talk to students. We really want to hear from students. If you're a student out there right now watching this, I encourage you, pick your favorite candidate, send them an email and ask them your questions. We would love to hear from you. And that is also true when we get elected, is because everything we're doing is for our students. We're doing, we're doing this job, we're running for office because we really care deeply about our, about our students. And so we want to hear what's working, we want to hear what's not working. And mechanisms that, well, you can reach out by email, by Facebook, by Instagram, well, maybe not, maybe some social media is less appropriate, don't SMS us because that's not appropriate. Have your parents come out and set up, set up a meeting with us. Respond to the student surveys when student surveys are given to you. And also as a board member, I would do my darndest to visit campuses as often as I can to actually see what's going on on the ground and understand how our schools are working and which ways they're not working as well as they should.
Thank you. Candidate Kamai.
When I was first deciding whether to run for school board, I started doing listening sessions with students. I of course have my own experience as a parent, having been in the district for a while, having kids at secondary and elementary, but it was important to me to make sure that I was hearing from others as well. And through that, I got to hear all kinds of causes that students in our district are interested in. Some of them aligned a lot with what I'm talking about today and helped inform a lot of when I say safety, how broadly I define it. When I talk also about bike safety, when I think sustainability really affects our mental health, and that that's something we need to be thinking through when I hear from students, how much students want the district to work more on that. When I hear about robotics team and what that looks like for folks, when I hear about how is evidence-based grading going, right? So these are all conversations I plan to continue to have as a board member. These right now are informal, I hope to continue having those informal conversations. I also want to think a little bit more about formal input too. We of course have student board reps, let's make sure that we've got student board reps from all of our high schools. And what are some other formal channels that we can really be inviting student input on, on issues that are before the board? So we've talked about several already today, mental health, we've talked about AI, those are things I would really want student input on to hear how the experiences are going. It's really interesting when you think that we would be a layboard, right, overseeing experts and the folks who are actually in the classroom. So I think this input piece is really key and would work hard to maintain and grow what I've already done.
Thank you. Candidate Salzman.
As a candidate who has three kids, one at the high school level, one at the middle school level, and one at the elementary school level, I definitely get plenty of input from students at home. And I also get input from my children's friends, including during carpool in the morning. And, and it is incredible to hear their perspectives, especially the high school students. You know, getting input directly from them in terms of how they think about mental health, how they think about stress at school, what they think about sustainability, you know, how they think about social media and the impact that that is having on their lives, I think is really, really important. So figuring out how we can create systems that support getting that feedback so it's not just at home and in the car, I think is really important. School board members are generally assigned to different school sites, and they are encouraged to visit those school sites. My understanding is that that hasn't necessarily been happening as much in the last few years. And it's something that I would really like to make sure I do if I'm elected to this board. I think the first step is showing up, making sure that people understand that you're available, approaching- people understand that you're available, approachable and interested in what they have to say. I think that goes a long way. I also think that we can work to identify student leaders, not just the student board reps, but other leaders and use them to get information about what's going on in the schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
It's really been one of the huge delights of my campaign, interacting with students and engaging them as part of my campaign. When I started out, the only volunteers on my campaign were students. And actually, I thought that might be all the way through to the end of the campaign. Certainly when I planned my kickoff, the two students who were able to speak were a huge part of that, part of that event and drove, since they planned the event, they were part of what drove the nature of that event. And so I think that that is something that I have carried through this campaign that I very much hope to continue as a board member. I recently held a candidate coffee. I noticed that, you know, all the candidate coffees were attended by parents. And so I recently held a candidate coffee that was specifically for students and no adult could come to that unless they were accompanying a student, but also that I encourage students to come there on their own. And I actually got a very encouraging mix of elementary students, middle school students and high school students, none of whom were shy to come forward and ask their own questions. I want to refer very quickly to when I was a JLS Connections Board President, I started an initiative to empower students and to get their point of view by bringing a low new farmer's market to JLS and making the JLS Connections International Market, as we ended up calling it, entirely student-driven. So the idea was that students would start small businesses, whether or not it's making bubble tea or stitching small toys or creating a bike that, that generated energy and that they would come and show their projects. Some were ropes projects. So I very much deeply believe in student empowerment and I hope to continue this as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu Wong.
There are many ways that we seek input from students. And all the candidates, of course, are talking to students and have interactions with students and that's really important. But what I think is most useful as a board member will be making these smaller opportunities to talk with students in smaller groups so that they feel like they can really share what's going on with them. I know at the nonprofit that I lead, we have over 200 PA U S D high school student volunteers. And so we set up lunches where we invite them, we come to their campus at lunchtime and we bring them Costco pizza, which does wonders. And they come and we chat about what they want to see done and how we can support them. We do the same thing for the alumni of our middle school program. When they get to our high schools and our high school students, we do every quarter a lunch where we invite them in and we talk about how can we support them, what resources do they want to see. We have events for their families at night where we, where students come and their siblings of all ages come and we talk to our students. So there's different ways we can make smaller groups out of a very large community to encourage communication. We should certainly have a middle college student board rep. We should consider things like a youth advisory group, which many organizations and bodies of government do to involve youths and to make sure that their voices are being amplified, not just heard, but amplified to the broader community. And as it relates to student surveys, we don't have as high a turnout as we would like. And the reason I've heard that is, is because they, they distrust what we're going to do with the survey results. Some feel like they're tattling on people or that they're going to get in trouble and be called into the office. And so we need to make sure that we're very clear about where those results are going to come from so that they can really truly be honest about their lived experiences.
Thank you so much. We've just got two questions left. Our second to last will be from the students once again.
In regards to all subjects, whether it's STEM or humanities classes, do you support or oppose more accelerated classes in high school? And how would you encourage students on both sides of the achievement spectrum, whether it's the highest or the lowest, and encourage them throughout middle school and into high school? You each have 90 seconds and, and we'll start with candidate Saltzman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I guess the first question I have is what we mean by accelerated.
Oh, my apologies. Candidate Camai. Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to all subjects, whether it's humanities or STEM classes, do you support or oppose more accelerated classes in high school? And how would you encourage students on the highest and the lowest spectrum of the achievement, of the achievement spectrum throughout middle school and into high school?
Thank you. So one of my campaign priorities is opportunities, academic opportunities for all. So making sure that we do have resources for our struggling students, opportunities for our advanced kids. And I think this plays right into what you're talking about. We're lucky to have already a wide range of courses at our high school, far more than what I experienced when I went to high school. However, as a board member, I believe that I'm responsive to the needs of the constituents. And I know that there are certain courses out there that folks want that we do not currently offer. Well, name several of them. One is multivariable calculus. One is AP US Government, French Ford. There's a lot out there. I, as one board member, cannot mandate that we do a certain course. What I can do is encourage our teachers to look into it and to hear what they have to say when they do their impact assessments, whether we can offer what students want. How would I promote these courses? I think that's making sure that folks know there's not just one pathway to success. There are many different ways that folks should and can and should be exploring their interests, their aptitudes and, and their academics. And so really trying to socialize how many different ways we can succeed, both in our schools and our society, and trying to get feedback from our teachers, from our parents, from our students about how we can continue to do that better for our students.
Thank you. Now candidate Saltzman.
So as I was starting to say, I think the first question that we have to ask ourselves is what do we mean by accelerated classes? I think that, you know, the whole concept of acceleration is a relative term and we really do need to think about these issues in relation to the broad range of students that we have in our district. You know, as a parent of three different kids with three very different needs, including one child who has an IEP and wears hearing aids and is on autism spectrum, I am acutely aware of just how different the needs of different kids can be. And I think it's very important that as a school district, we figure out as best we can how to tailor the academic opportunities that are available in our district to the needs of each individual student and make sure that we aren't attaching some sort of value judgment to whether they happen to be taking, you know, the most advanced class in a particular subject or not. I think what's most important is that we help students figure out what's right for them, what their interests are, what their motivations are. And taking classes that they are ready to be successful in is much more important than simply trying to accelerate every student to whatever the end course is in a particular subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Chu.
I'm narrowly in favor of more academic classes across both STEM subjects and humanities in the sense of choice. We've spoken before about how my family has very much made choice choices. And so I believe in the idea of differentiated education and how each student should decide themselves where their best academic, most appropriate academic placement is. However, I would temper that with the idea that I believe, similar to my fellow candidate here, that we need to change the conversation about acceleration and achievement. I would, one, like to see a broader spectrum of our understanding of achievement so that it is not overly focused on one academic subject or another. But instead, we have a conversation that normalizes the idea that there is excellence in achievement to be found in many academic fields and in fields outside of academia, whether that's in extracurricular activities or indeed in social emotional talents that sometimes seem to be lacking in the conversation around success at middle school and high school. I also want to point out, and I would love to normalize conversation around this also, that success at middle school and high school academics is not an indicator even of even financial success, let alone happiness in later life.
Thank you. Candidate Chu Wong.
I believe there's a lot of opportunities for acceleration, both within our schools currently as well as through amazing programs outside of our schools that are free at Foothill. We have great programs. We do need to make sure that there's enough room for all the students. I've heard that some students, the classes fill up. That seems like a very solvable problem that I would be committed to working with Foothill to address. But what I really want to talk about right now with my limited time is that we cannot talk about acceleration without talking about mental health. And I've heard a lot of conversations that, that that's, that's a misunderstanding and talking about bringing accelerated classes like multivariable calculus during the bell schedule into our high schools. And we are in effect gaslighting the experience of the majority of our high school students. There is a cost to accelerated classes. Our students are experiencing stress and every student I have talked to has said that academics and academic pressure has an effect on their mental health. So when we think about acceleration, if we have those opportunities that are students that want it and that that's their happy place and they want to find it, if they have opportunities to find it, I think that's wonderful. I think we should support those opportunities, continue to support them. I think we should support our teachers in bubbling up classes that our students want. But at the same time, when we add accelerated classes into our bell schedule, what we do is we show the students, follow those classes because they're smart and they feel that they need to take those classes in order to get where they want to go to the narrowly defined success that we have here. We want to encourage them to follow their passions. And right now, through offering more accelerated classes at our campuses, that does not do that.
Thank you. Candidate Callahan.
So one of the main tenets of my campaign is I want every child in our district to learn to love learning. And the way you learn to love learning is by having your kids do things which are cool and exciting and are at an appropriate level for the kid, right? And so I love the fact that we've got a huge range of skill levels of classes in our high schools. I love the fact that when I go in, I substitute teach in a calculus B C class, the kids are teaching me things. And I've got a PhD in computer science, so that's like sort of surprising. I know a lot of math. But this is really cool. The interpedant in me wants to point out that district speak, acceleration means skipping a class. So for example, if you already studied outside of school and learned all the concepts in geometry, you could apply to accelerate and skip geometry and take the next class in the math sequence. I think that part should be completely transparent what the process is and make it really easy for kids to understand what bar they have to jump over if they want to do that kind of thing. But in terms of making sure that we have a wide range of things for our kids to do, we, we have a huge spectrum of classes. I wish I could have taken glass blowing when I was in high school because, you know, that's just so freaking cool. But yeah, so that's where I am.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates. With our remaining time, we would like to give you a chance to make closing statements and tell Palo Alto voters why you think they should cast their ballot for you. You each have 60 seconds. I will start with candidate Saltzman.
We'll go in reverse alphabetical this time.
Okay. Thanks for everyone for being here. Thanks to the Weekly for organizing. Thanks to our student panelists as well for, for your time and interest. Our district serves an incredibly diverse community. Our students have a wide range of strengths and challenges. And we want all our students to find their right path and achieve their goals. The school system is incredibly complex and the role of the board is not to solve every problem that arises, but it is the board's job to guide our schools into the future and help shape our district's culture. Come December, we will have three brand new members on our school board. The perspectives and experience those board members bring to the table will inform their decision-making. As a parent of three kids who has been involved in our schools at all levels and also has experience with special education, I think I have a valuable perspective to offer. And I hope you'll give me a chance to represent our community by voting for me between now and November 5th. Thank you and thanks again to our moderators and organizers.
Thank you. We'll go to candidate Camai.
Thank you all for being here. I know I'm here because I care. And my guess is that that's why you all are here too. That's why everybody's listening in. And we don't just kind of care, we really care. We care about our kids. We care about our teachers. We care about our staff. We care about our community. My journey here started a long time ago. Before I was born, I come from a line of educators four generations back on two sides. I myself taught for a couple of years. I say this to say I understand, I've been surrounded by teachers, understand the challenges, the goals of teachers. I come to service too. I've started working with youth in high school, working with inner-city youth on issues of belonging. I now do policy work where I pass laws here in our state and work on policy in the federal government on behalf of kids and families. I say this to say I know how to get things done. And I'm here to bring those skills to the board, skills of transparency, skills of bringing us together on our shared values, skills of listening to folks and skills of bringing this passion to you and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Callahan.
So I just want to start by thanking you for running this forum. It's awesome. And I also want to thank the audience for sticking it out this long. If you're watching online, thank you for not turning it off. And if you're sitting in here, thank you for freezing your rear end off. As you may have noticed, I'm sort of a nerd. I've got data right here on ear quality. And also I can tell you got down to 64 degrees in here. It is cold. And quite, quite frankly, I have a long track record of being a nerd. I'm a nerd who's involved in our schools in every way, shape and form that I can. Not only do I have a PhD in CS, and I also have management experience which I bring to the board. I've hired and I've fired people and I've set goals and I've led high-performing organizations. I also have experience as a PTA leader. I got a reputation as being the treasurer who could make budget presentations fun and exciting. And I also got a reputation of being the PTA president who would listen to everyone in the community and actually gather data from the community to make decisions like how and when we should reopen our schools. I'm also experienced in the classes as a teacher. And so it's because of all that experience and my demonstrated track record of caring for all of our kids that you should vote for me.
Candidate Chu Wong.
You've heard me say a lot tonight that I'm going to let the teachers lead the way or we should let the students lead the way. And I say that because I understand the job of a school board member. And I feel that I'm qualified and prepared and ready to be a school board member. I have gone to the last two and a half years of school board meetings, almost all of them in person except for two that I watched on Zoom. And I've watched two years back of school board meetings. I've talked to many school board members and I think we're getting feedback. Can you turn that off? And, and I, and I'm endorsed by over a dozen current and former school board members that have told me and showed me what the job means, which is one of governance and fiscal responsibility and collaboration and process. I am an attorney who understands public policy and governance. I am an entrepreneur who understands how to scale and empower teams and empower leaders within teams. I am now the leader of an educational equity nonprofit that has seen the real true lived experience of opportunity gap in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Chu.
First, I want to say thank you to the Palo Alto Weekly for hosting us so graciously. Also to our professional journalists and our student journalists for the questions and to the audience. May I say it was a huge joy to meet the vast range of parents and students and teachers that I've had the opportunity to talk to on the campaign trail. And what it brought home to me is the complexity and the uniqueness of this district in that there are so many diverse issues that people are willing to opine on and feel very strongly about. And I would say that what I would like to bring to the board is an opportunity to elevate some of these voices that haven't previously been heard or felt like that they have had a place at the table. I think that the challenges before us, as those of us who will be on the board in terms of new members to the board, are highly complex and perhaps even highly contentious. As someone who has negotiated difficult negotiations in some of the world's most toughest regions, war zones in Sudan, Chad and so on, I wouldn't say that Palo Alto is a war zone, but I would say that feeling about a number of issues is very deep. And I hope to be able to represent many of those diverse voices in this future time. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all our candidates. Before I hand over the mic to Adam for some closing remarks, I just want to give a huge thank you to all of you for being here tonight, for answering our questions. Thank you so much to the audience for being respectful here and here tonight and to those watching online. And I also want to do a huge thank you to MidPen Media for helping us televise this conversation. And just so you all know, this will be posted online. In the back, we also have some flyers with the grids that we created based on responses from the candidates to our questions. Heading into election day, we also have a whole bunch more of information online at paloaltoonline.com if you're interested in this race or any other races on your ballot this fall. With that, I will hand over the mic to Adam to close us out.
Thank you very much, Sarah. And I wanted to echo your thanks to the candidates for coming tonight and giving us all of their perspectives on all the issues that are facing our school district. And I wanted to give special thanks to Sarah, Lisa and our student journalists for their thoughtful questions this evening. I have one final message. I have one final message and that is that local news is in serious condition across this country. The funding sources that fueled local news for decades have changed dramatically with the internet. People's consumption of how, of news has changed, advertising has changed, the local business market has changed that fueled all of this advertising and local news outlets across the country are foundering. These pressures are affecting us as well and this is what fueled our conversion to nonprofit at the beginning of this year in order for us to be able to lean in and get more support from the community to support our mission. So if you appreciate this kind of coverage of the local issues, if you appreciate all of the work that we do the other 11 months of the year, and if you value us as an institution for the community, I can't urge you enough to support us. And there are two ways to do that. First and foremost, please become a member if you are not already a member. And if you are already a member, please consider making a donation. You can get more information about our situation and our plans for the future in the back and as well scan those Q R codes if you would like to make a donation or become a member. So thank you again for coming tonight and good luck in November with casting your ballots. Thank you.